Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. That with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please be seated. Okay, so, did everybody have a chance to read the minutes? I'll take that as a yes.
Motion approved.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve the minutes. Looks like we have some additions to the agenda.
We have ten D and ten E. Ten D is the approval of proceed of the sale with the Third Street property affectionately known as the Old Asian Grocery Store. And E is approval of the sale of the broad acres property owned by the EDA. And then, I'm sorry, on nine, we also have INS engineer report with Chris Larson.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So I will.
Second?
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the agenda is approved as amended. Does anybody see any possible conflicts of interest in any of the items this evening? Councilman Peterson?
What?
Do you have any conflicts of interest possible here?
I do not.
Public comment? Anybody want to comment on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to INS engineer report with Chris.
Well, thanks. I don't have anything real formal to present. I just haven't been here in a few months, and I was here this afternoon, so I thought I'd hang out and make sure you knew I was still involved with everything. The ponds are coming along. They started the water balance test on one of the cells, and it sounds like later this week they'll start on the other ones. So, basically, they fill the ponds with some water, wait for a couple of weeks, they take these readings, and if there's a rain day or something, that rating doesn't count. But that's kind of, along with the compaction, other soil testing that's been done, that's kind of the final test to show that they're not leaking, and then they can be put in service. So during that period, they're putting gravel on the access road and shaping up the green areas and getting it ready for seeding and so forth. So that's, those should be online soon. Phase one, they, if you recall, we did a change order for switching to flowable fill under a couple of the pipe segments that were under some houses. They did that, it was successful, so that went very well. Now, there's a few punch list items, and we should be closing that out soon. And then, I should have asked before the holiday week, I asked Dunick for an updated schedule on when they thought they might start phase three, because it's, last we had heard is going to be late July, maybe early August. So, once we have a more precise estimate anyway from them, we'll get some newsletters out and remind people that there'll be some activity this year, you have to start on that. So, that's all I really had to update. Any questions? I'd be happy to field them, otherwise.
When they do-
It'd be nice to see me again.
When they do kick off that phase three, what-
Yeah.
...sections are they gonna, they're gonna do it in sections, I would assume?
Yeah. They'll start towards the intersection of Hollit and Third, because that's the lowest point of the sanitary, and they usually follow sanitary mains upstream. And as they, as they go upstream, there'll be opportunities for them to branch off. And depending, we've heard that they have a project wrapping up, I forget where it was, I think it was in South or North Dakota, later this summer. So, late summer, early fall, they might, all their crews that are on those, they might send them here. So, there might be a lot going on this fall, but weather can always change anything, but that's kind of their plan. So, that'll be included in their newsletters, the anticipated kind of phasing and everything once we get more information from them.
Okay. But we're not looking at doing winter months with torn up streets, are we?
Correct, yeah. Excuse me, anything they tear up this year needs to be back with the first lift of asphalt before winter.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you. Third Street Downtown Option.
As you saw in your pack, is there is maps that were provided by ASG, and if there's any questions ongoing in this, Chris is the hard charger on drawing this up, but there's been multiple discussions with the Third Street, you know, as what to do. It went from vacating to downtown, or vacating the downtown area and making it kind of a nickel at mall, then it went to a single way with angled parking. And after discussing with Chris and looking at the measurements between buildings and things like that, it really ended up being the best option was to continue and almost follow what the Sabanji Plan from years back basically laid out with putting the bump outs at the curbs. Those are areas where if we received the ARP grant, we could, we could put benches or trees or things like that, and that's all stuff that'll get a little more detailed in the engineering plan if approved. Some things to note in this is that there are some extensions to the ends that are not the post office and not the library. Obviously, the city doesn't need anything in front of the library, and the post office doesn't, but that would be to encourage maybe like a outdoor patio type section in any of those businesses. And the business on the corner of Morgan and Third, or the empty building there, you know, hopefully that would spark somebody to maybe put in something with outdoor seating or something like that, kind of give that downtown feel type of thing. On the second page of it, you can see that there, where the Masonic Lodge building was, was talked about as potential of being a parking lot, that, and Jeff, you might want to touch on this a little more, it sounded like some of the business owners got pretty excited about that.
Not some of them, all of them.
Okay.
Were excited about having the extra parking.
So, and that's a potential, and it's not required by any of this, but as we're doing this project, putting in the approach to that would definitely make sense at this point because of the additional engineering stuff. The way, and then that goes down to the end by the bank and the chiropractic place, just having those small bump outs down there. So, this kind of falls in place with the design that was presented to the city, you know, the Sabanji Plan, I guess I don't remember the date of it, but it was quite a few years back. And it kind of, it kind of meets what was originally discussed and presented by changing some of the layout, but yet it doesn't make huge changes where with vacating, there were businesses that were absolutely against it, and then there were businesses when it was one way, where it would have only had parking on one side, they were also unsupportive of that because of the fact that there are some people that they have that get out of their cars and need to, you know, because of their age or condition, need to immediately access that building. Even had one person tell me they circle the block until a place is open in front of that business. So, this kind of helps meet it, plus, you know, with the engineers' recommendations, if I'm safe saying that, Chris, that we really couldn't make the other ones very workable. So, the stage that we're at right now is that for the initial planning of this, the EDA board actually approved setting this up as kind of an economic development thing. And then if the council would see fit to move forward with this, there are, was it seventy-eight hundred dollars in engineering costs to move forward to make this, you know, to give this to Dunick, who has already awarded the project, we'd have to change some of the engineering, you know, and draft a new plan to give them what to do. That cost the EDA did offer to pay it as long as the council approved doing this project in the first place. So, that's kind of where we're at, is where you want to see if you want more questions answered. I don't think we're in much of a time crunch right now, but I guess I'd open it up to whatever you-
What would be the difference in cost if we just replace as is? You know, with the street sidewalks the same width and everything versus the cost of going with the wider sidewalks?
The, so, right now, as drawn, basically, the only difference from what we provided there versus what Dunick bid on are the bump outs. So, we were already narrowing the street a little bit, because it's wider than it needs to be to fit parallel parking and two-way traffic. So, the sidewalks are already getting wider with what is, Dunick is under contract for now. So, the difference is the bump outs. We haven't done an estimate on that, but you're going to have more concrete costs, obviously, but less blacktop.
Concrete.
The sidewalk, yeah, and it will be more expensive than the blacktop, but we haven't done an estimate on it, we sure can.
Well, I just have a few questions.
Yep.
With the bump outs, if we would do the larger bump out in front of Bonnie and Clyde's, how would we maintain the walk-through for people that are walking on the sidewalk to go around the corner, whatever? Because people aren't going to want to have to try to weave through people dining to just get past or to go to a different store or something.
Right. And I guess we-
I can touch on that.
Yeah.
So, in other areas where they do things similar to this, they would have, and it would be to the cost of Bonnie and Clyde's if they deem that they would like to do this. To put in maybe, for lack of better words, a socket down in the sidewalk that they could put railing in, and then the accessible point would have to walk around theirs. So, we'd have to have the forty-eight inches around that fenced-in area that they would have. And that would be, the cost would be on them to have that. They would have to maintain and sweep it and take care of it because they're fencing it in and our equipment can't get in it. But then in the winter, and the way I, you know, in talking with Mike, the owner, I said, if something like this went through, you would be responsible to pull those so that in the winter we could maintain the sidewalk just as the way it was. And that was a recommendation of Shane based on public works clearing the sidewalks. So, to answer your question, I know that's a long way of going around your question, but there'd be a fenced-in area that would be removed in the winter.
So, then how much, I'm not a blueprint reader, I see, I think it's like eleven, almost twelve feet, the whole sidewalk. So, you're talking four feet would remain sidewalk, so that would give them eight, seven?
Well, and this is bump-
Feet further.
This actually bumped out further too, so I think-
Yeah, the eleven feet is, that's what'll be-
Oh, right here.
Along the whole block, and then the bump outs are wider yet.
Do you know the width of the bump outs?
I'm just wondering-
It would be about the same as the parking lane, so I think it's-
How much space has Bonnie and Clyde been gaining from this? I mean, is it going to be that they can put two tables out there, or is it going to be a larger space to make it more worth the while?
Well, and we put this together, I guess I didn't, we didn't talk about that being the reason for the bump outs, so we didn't, you know, lay out tables or anything like that. But if you can picture like downtown Mankato, they have a similar arrangement, and you can fit two-by-two, or not, yeah, two-by-two tables in four, six feet or so. So, that would be, even in the straightaway part, you could fit that width-wise, the question will be ADA, because whatever they're allowed to walk around still needing to meet ADA, you know, that's the public access portion.
And that would be the property owner's problem, not the city's?
Yes, on their patio portion, right.
But the layout-
The part that goes around, yeah.
Basically, you would have to draft up how far they could be, put out the fence, and then that would be the requirement to meet that. They couldn't come out and exceed-
You draw the line, and it got to stay inside it, yeah.
Right.
And if I am reading this right, or I get it, the bump outs are more of a, they're not necessarily specifically planned for a patio or a business to serve food or whatever, but they're more of a beautification to provide maybe benches and some greenery and that kind of thing. So, if Bonnie and Clyde's chooses to do that in front of their place, then that's their, everything would be on them as far as cost or whatever.
Well, if it's just for beautification, then why aren't we just doing four of the smaller bump outs for less money?
Sure could, yep.
If it's just for beautification, I mean, if it's to do, allow Bonnie and Clyde's to have the outdoor thing, otherwise, why are we going through the added expense of having the larger bump out?
Well, and I mentioned when we were discussing the changes and possibilities down there, these changes and possibilities are, in some cases, business owners asking for it, in some cases, planning commission is asking for it to down. But that two-block area, those specific places, their assessment for this project needs to reflect those changes that are in, so their assessment will be higher than someone up down the street because they wanted these changes.
Yeah, that would have to come in the negotiation with them. If you want, you know, because, okay, if you look across to the post office side, that bump out could be matched on the other side by Bonnie and Clyde's, and that would be fine. So, what we need to do is try and calculate how much more will this cost be, and if they're willing to pay the assessment for that, the costs incurred to make that happen. Admittedly, the city will lose one parking spot by doing that, but we gain a business that has, you know, you kind of get that downtown feel, for lack of better words. So, and I agree, I think that when you, when you talk about this, we should figure out what it would cost for the matching for that versus this, and that should be assessed to them directly.
Well, because you're going to run into trouble if this business is going to want it because it's not a restaurant or anything at this point in time.
And that's optional too. That's something where we'd have to discuss with that business owner. The only reason why it wasn't discussed for either of the other corners here is because the library, it doesn't function anything at the library unless you have a different perspective on that. And the post office has the three-minute parking up front that they want to keep.
And with that small bump out, they will not lose a parking spot?
Well, the parking spot in front of them will turn into, you know, they'll, their three-minute parking will just shift down just a little bit, but as you can see, it still matches in front of their building, it's maybe a foot into the next.
There's a setback from an intersection that you're able to park anyway. Whether things are striped and whether it's parked that way in practice, I don't know, but-
The bump outs will eliminate people trying to crowd in in front of the post office instead-
With their rear end hanging on South Street.
Rear end hanging on South Street. So, I think that portion of the bump out functions for traffic control really well.
Then the other thing I couldn't tell is the width here between the two bump outs, you know, because those are busy intersections that if somebody- finally came up.
At the throat here?
Yeah. You know, because if people are sitting at the stop sign, and people are trying to turn, turn down there, I mean, I'm just wondering how wide that is with the two bump outs.
It should be, it's twenty, I think it's twenty-four feet, maybe even twenty-six from curb to curb. We ran a turning template of, and admittedly, it wasn't with a car parked here, but with like a box truck being able to turn these corners and not hop over.
And that's not a problem.
Right.
And if you look, this is actually no narrower than if there's parked cars along here. So, there's still pass-through traffic, if that's your question.
Yep.
And, you know, just as a proponent possibly for this, this is heavily favored because of it's more pedestrian-friendly. You actually have the pedestrian out further from the building, standing on the curb, and it's actually safer for pedestrian traffic for this. So, you see, it's supported in that manner as well.
The visibility is there, that's-
Yep.
Yep.
So, it doesn't create new dangers for pedestrians, it actually makes it safer for them.
I know it happens rarely too, but are we going to post, would Third Street become no semis? I know it's rare that I've seen, you know, only a few times that semis have come down the street, but are we going to make that, that they could not come down the street at all?
My understanding, they're not allowed down the street now the way it is, so-
I didn't think they were.
As far as posting signs in city limits, that's planning and zoning, and the council can institute, you know, planning and zoning could ask the council.
The way that laws read, you can designate a truck route, and that's supposed to be the primary ingress and outgress, egress of a community, but you cannot bar them from any street to make a delivery. So, I mean, if they're there just to deliver something and go, you can't stop them, they can do that.
Okay.
Whether it's a truck route or not.
Even if the street is not stressed for that weight?
Yep.
Well, I don't see how you can do that.
I couldn't confirm that or deny it.
I know both Jason and the previous chief mentioned that numerous times at council meetings, that you have posted truck routes, and those are for ingress and egress, for the trucks to get into our town, but you cannot stop them from making a delivery anywhere in town.
Well, and I think you're going to see beer trucks and things like that that are going to come down there regardless.
Yeah.
But I think that these bump outs, if they realize they can't make that, they're going to come up with an alternative route to get straight before they would come around. So, they might go down a block or come down to Front Street and approach it from Front Street, because the bump outs won't go out into Front, or, I'm sorry, South Street, the bump outs won't go out into South Street. So, if they need to approach one way or the other, they should be able to accomplish that. And realistically, the beer delivery trucks for both the liquor store and for Bonnie and Clyde's are going to want to come down South Street, so that-
Yeah, I don't see a fifty-three-foot trailer and a conventional tractor coming down through So, tonight, you're wanting our costings to move forward to get more hard costs or-
So, well, to get the costs, they need to finish the next engineering step and then propose it to Dunick, correct?
Right.
And get what it would cost us additional. So, I mean, that's the gamble at this point, that's the-
Let's say propose change order to the original contract.
So, you're looking for approval to move forward?
Correct, and more so because the EDA said they'd fund the engineering with council approval. So, if we don't have council approval, it dies and it just goes to liking kind what was there, or the narrowing of it.
A little bit narrower, but yeah.
With council approval, then it would go to, we'd go to the engineering and come back with the costs at a later date for final approval.
Well, I think in light of the Sabanji Plan, how long, wasn't that like ninety-seven or something?
Two thousand and one, somewhere in there.
So, you look at the time that's passed since that was even drawn up, and now we have an opportunity to do something with the downtown area and beautify that area. If we pass on it at this point and let it die, it could be another twenty years before you have the opportunity to do it again.
But it was passed on because of reasoning last time too, money.
Right.
They're waiting, basically waiting for the infrastructure projects to go through is why they held off on doing any of the other stuff, so it's-
I would just add, there's no better time to do it than now.
Right, that's the bottom line.
So-
So, is it going to make any difference with snow removal?
I mean, it'll be a little bit tougher, you know, with those bottlenecks in the intersections, but I mean, we can work around that.
Shane played heavily in the design of this as well because of snow removal. So, that was, and the planning commission actually asked for Shane's input when they were discussing this.
Well, because when you're talking about narrowing the road, the first thing that comes to my mind is in the winter when you got the snow piled up in the middle of the road, and it's already hard for two cars to be going with people parking and stuff like that, so now with it narrowed, it has nothing to do with the bump outs or anything, I mean, it's just the whole road being narrowed.
Yeah. That isn't terrible. The biggest thing is we'll have to bring our intersections into the roadway a little further instead of into the intersection. We'll have to bring it in, you know, four directions just to keep, because otherwise, you know, if we piled everything like we currently do, no one will be able to get through.
Well, I mean, it's the first thing that pops in my mind is trying to drive through there now.
Or we'll go unload intersections and then start a route. I mean, there's different tactics we can take, but-
There'll be a learning curve that you got to avoid.
And as far as managing the sidewalk, your equipment will be able to-
Yeah. It's the same area we're moving, it's just more sidewalk and less road. It's a trade-off thing.
Yeah.
The distance between the buildings isn't going to change.
No, but it's different equipment that can go down the sidewalk.
Yeah.
That now is wider, and one sweep isn't going to do-
Right.
Do it.
I think what we heard during the design was that we wanted to make this area more pedestrian-friendly and have room for trees and benches and things like that. So, there's a trade-off, because like, you only, you have a defined width to work in.
Let's not plant any trees.
That's optional.
Yeah, let's down the road.
We'll be cutting them down like the liquor store once.
This also definitely meets along with the active living plan for Tracy moving forward, you know, more pedestrian-friendly downtown, looking for more traffic, you know, they want that foot traffic in downtown areas. And there's always a possibility that some grants could come up on something like that, you know? So, you know, we could possibly, and I believe time's on our side, I, don't quote me, but I don't think they'll be digging up Third Street this year, so that could give us a whole year to either budget for the changes on this or try and find some funding sources for it. Granted, we still have to approach it with, if we don't get any money, we're going to be paying the bill, so, but having that time might be, might be very helpful.
Well, and we won't know what we can do until we go ahead with the engineering and get some numbers on it, so.
Yep.
I will make a motion that we go ahead, do the engineering, so Dunick can give us a number on it. I would include the ramp and the parking lot, just so we know what our costs are. And along with that motion, I would also stress again, that two-block area, those affected property owners are going to pay a little more in assessment because this is a little more improvement to their property than what they would have gotten before, so.
We're going to need to know what those numbers are before we approach them, so we would have to-
Well, they just have to be aware. And they won't know what the numbers are until you get done with the engineering, so.
Yep.
And the engineering cost is going to be covered by the EDA?
EDA.
So, it's not going to cost, well, it'll cost, but-
It'll come out of funds from the sale of previous buildings, so it won't be a new item added, it will be taken out of economic-
So, we have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second it. I have a question then too.
Okay, first and a second, is there any discussion, further discussion?
So, we were talking like down in front of Bonnie and Clyde's, like putting the pins in so they could put up-
Put that back.
Put up a fence or whatever. Are we going to do that at any of the other corners just to have them in there? So, let's say, you know, the building sitting down here at the corner someday that turns into a little bar or restaurant, and they go, hey, we would like to have that out so we don't have to go and, it's another one of those, what does it cost to put a hole in the ground today with something that you could slide a fence into, other than like five years from now, somebody goes, hey, I want to put a little patio out there? So, we'd have to jackhammer up the street again, or the sidewalk anyhow.
The ones I've seen in Mankato, they actually, there's like weighted pads that the fence sits on.
Just like it is on-
There's nothing that penetrates the sidewalk.
The one like that's what's not one that's going in.
Right, it just sits on top of the sidewalk.
I like that better anyways, because holes concern me about tripping hazards and blockers and canes and-
Right, yep.
Going right in that hole.
Yep.
So, I was wondering about that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of moving forward with the Third Street option, downtown option, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Third Street Downtown Option to move forward and with the engineering. National Night Out, request to donate picnic tables.
So, in the past, the city has donated the picnic tables for National Night Out, it was a thousand-dollar donation. The National Night Out Board is asking for that same donation, they rent the picnic tables and have them brought up.
I make a motion to approve the donation.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to make the donation of picnic tables for National Night Out. Donation from Ballig.
So, without even asking, Ballig Engineering donated- So, without even asking, Balig Engineering donated three hundred dollars to the Fly-in Breakfast Boxcar Days Celebration, just at will. There are engineers that take care of the airport master plan project, and it just came in the mail, and I just thought that we should add it in, make the public aware of it, and then, with your permission, I'd like to send them a thank you letter back on behalf of the council and mayor.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Yep, sounds good. Approval to proceed with sale of the Asian Grocery Store.
This would be, the public hearing's been taken care of for both this property on D and E, so we're just looking for the next step, or the last step would be city council approval. We do not have a buyer right now for the Asian Grocery Store. What I laid in front of you was a, an older memorandum of understanding of a, for purchase of real property, and then also there is the actual closing of the Broad Acres, so that would be two different, two different ones, which would be D and E. So, we're just looking, I'm looking for the city council for final approval on both of those.
I have a question.
Sure.
On number two, it's got like the purchase price, is that, is this just a form?
That is just a, that is just a form, it won't be used, it was just, it just, it shows that the, that it was for sale, and, you know, we talked about a potential owner at one point. That would all be drawn up again if we, 'cause we still don't know what we're gonna do with the, the roof and the inside of the building right now, but I just need permission to be able to market it and sell it when it comes up.
Essentially, it's the council giving permission for the EDA Board to enter into a sale or purchase of that building when they receive an appropriate offer or terms that they agree to.
So, do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve and for, for the proceeding of selling the Third Street at one oh, was it one oh six?
Yeah, one oh six, Third Street, yep.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for approval to sell the Third Street property.
Then I'd make a motion for the sale of Broad, Broad Acres property.
I'll second it.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for sale of Broad Acres.
Thank you.
Okay, on to allegations of misconduct of EDA Board member. I would like to say, before we get into this, the question tonight is whether we move forward and whether there needs to be a hearing. It's not about hearing any of the merits of the case right now. We just are deciding whether or not a, a hearing needs to be set and move forward with it. That's it. Also, I will ask again about conflict of interest here. I believe one does exist, as the person involved here is your employer.
Has nothing to do with the, the facts of the case.
Well, I disagree. I, I think it, it gives the appearance of a conflict of interest, and I would ask that you accuse yourself from involvement with this.
I have no financial gain in it one way or another, and I was put here by the voters to vote my conscience and to vote and look out for the best interests of the city. I've been doing that for ten years. I resent the fact that you assume that I have a conflict. I don't know where you'd come up with that. My personal integrity, from my history dictates, I cannot have a conflict of interest, I have to look out for the interest of the city. I would not impugn my integrity in such a manner as you're accusing me of.
I am not accusing you of anything, Mr. Peterson, nothing at all. I've been advised from our city attorney that this is a clear conflict of interest.
Your city attorney advised that on numerous other occasions, and I proved him wrong legally, and I stand by that this time.
Okay, well, I'm the mayor, and I believe there's a conflict of interest here, and it would be in violation of Minnesota Statute six oh nine point four-three, as well as city code, to not identify and abstain. The council will not hear or count your vote or your input in this matter.
You don't have the authority to do that, sir. You do not.
I believe I do. By Minnesota Statute and city code.
You do not, sir.
Okay, well, you are aware that this, the failure to do so would constitute malfeasance and could result in further action, to include possible recall?
Is that a threat?
It is not a threat, it is a fact.
Sure strikes me as a threat.
Oh, I'm sorry you feel that way. I have no intention whatsoever to threaten you in any way, it's just a fact of the case, that's all. I'm not trying to threaten you.
I thought we weren't bringing up any evidence at this time.
We are not.
But you already, you're quoting facts.
I'm saying that I believe there's a conflict of interest here.
That's your personal belief, and I respect that.
And, and that failure to recuse yourself and acknowledge that, the fact of the matter is, that's in violation of Minnesota State Statute and city code. That's the facts that we're talking about, that is not opinion.
It's based on opinion, I'm sorry.
Okay, so what's in front of us right now is, we need to decide how we want to act on these allegations, if we want to have a hearing to allow the person to have a chance to tell his side of the story.
Exactly.
Does a conflict of interest, if it exists or not, I'm not gonna get into that right now, because I'll be honest, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know my laws as well as maybe both of you two do, but right now, to move forward, we just need to make a motion if we wanna have a hearing or not, to move forward. Does a conflict of interest stop that in any way? It's one vote, he can't, he is not gonna be a quorum, so we should be able to still have the, the vote as to how we wanna move forward, 'cause we're not gonna be arguing the case or anything like that, we're just saying if we wanna move forward with it. Correct?
Well, yes, it is, the question, it's two separate questions, that, you're, you're correct. The question is, do we need to move forward and have a hearing so that all parties are able to be heard? And, and that's the one question. The other question is whether or not there is a conflict of interest here, as Mr. Peterson works for Mr. Solomon.
I, I understand that, but I sit here and I think if we talked about some Sanford business, I don't know if I would feel like I could not conduct business ethically and stuff like that, just because Sanford is my employer. Yes, I get my paycheck from, from them, but when I'm on this council, I'm not Sanford's employer.
Exactly.
I'm a council person that was voted on. Now, if the lawyer sees differently than that, it can be addressed before the next, when we have the hearing and we decide if we're gonna move forward, and we actually vote then, after we've heard both sides, are we, how are we gonna rule? Then we would need a clear decision made if there's a conflict of interest or not. But to do this kind of a vote today, I think in good conscience, I think Tony can move forward with his vote as to if we need to move forward with a hearing. That's my opinion as a council person. I don't wanna get in the middle of the two of you or anything like that.
No, and I'm not, I'm not trying to insult Mr. Peterson at all. I, I'm going by what my understanding of my duties and responsibilities are and, and what I'm being advised here. I, and I tend to agree with what you're saying, we're not attorneys, any of us. So, I would ask, since we are only voting on whether or not we move forward, I would ask Mr. Peterson to abstain from the vote, and we need more clarification as to conflict of interest, then we can get that and we can consult with the attorneys over when it, for the hearing and that involvement.
But abstaining from the vote is saying he's got a conflict of interest.
It should be tabled.
So, city code two point three zero clearly states that if there's a conflict of interest, that the council member should abstain from voting. So, what it would be, the determination is, do you feel that that presents a conflict of interest, the fact that Mr. Peterson works for Mr. Solomon? That would be what the question would be. The options are, there's options where Mr. Peterson can abstain if he so sees fit, it sounds like he doesn't want to, the city council can censure Mr. Peterson and have a vote or a motion on that and declare that they do not want him to, or they can vote to allow him to. That's where I would say that you sit at this, at this point.
Well, I'll be honest, I don't wanna table this. I mean, I think we, we need to move forward on it. This is another thing I don't wanna just kick down the road, 'cause it's not gonna go away, I think we need to deal with it, so...
So, it sounds like we need to take a vote as to whether or not Mr. Peterson should abstain.
Okay.
So, do we take that vote individually?
You need a motion for that to occur.
Can I get a motion for that?
Is there a proper way to word it?
I'm not gonna make a motion, 'cause I don't agree with him.
The proper way to word it would be to make a motion on whether Mr. Peterson should abstain from voting in, in any of the issues with Mr. Solomon because of his employment.
So, you're asking for the motion to more or less say he has a conflict of interest told, not just tonight?
We can't get anywhere with anything else until that obstacle is directed, I would say.
I'll give a little history. I don't know if the public remembers it, or some others on the council were here at the time, but we'll go back to this recall and all the other stuff, and the city attorney sat in this room and told me I couldn't vote on it, it was a conflict of interest. And we argued, I don't know how many times, but before it was all said and done, he said, you know I was wrong, that wasn't the conflict? I voted, I made the motion to vote for, to do the recall election, and the mayor sitting next to me said, no, you can't do that. I made it anyway, and that's the motion that they passed. You have to, if you don't have integrity, you don't have anything. And I feel that this attitude, if nothing else, or opinion, that someone made without me being aware of having a chance to discuss or defend, that impugns my integrity, that offends me to the point that I'm boiling on his side. Ten years, ten years, never missed a meeting. Ten years, never lost my temper, and tonight, you're making me lose my damn temper.
I know that, you said that you don't want to table this. I feel like, do we need more direction from our attorney on how we can go about this? Because I don't feel, me personally, I just don't feel comfortable to be, you know, deciding if somebody can vote or not. I just feel like, you know, because it's, it's really, you know, just my opinion, and I, I don't feel like I have enough to really make that decision for someone to either, they can vote on that or not, so...
I think the way that you have to look at it is, the city attorney has said that, has stated that there's a conflict of interest here. It has, and I realize some of the stuff in the past, but, you know, that's his opinion. Whether you wanna take his opinion or not is your choice as a council member. The League of Minnesota Cities clearly dictates that you can't vote on things to do with your employment, your employer, or direct friends. Now, how do you classify direct friends? And then, you know, the issue that you're at right now is that the mayor has asked Mr. Peterson to abstain from voting, and he has declined the offer. So, this can move forward with a vote, you know, you, you can move forward with it, you can table it and ask for more information to be presented, or you can, and again, you can vote and censor Mr. Peterson. Realistically, those are the only options for moving forward.
Can I throw out a potential other option? Can we move it forward by deciding if we're gonna have a hearing?
Well, somebody could make a motion...
And then, before the date of the hearing, you always set the date, before the date of the hearing, that there be a ruling or a recommendation, whatever, from the lawyer as to if it's a conflict of interest or not, and I think Tony needs ample opportunity, just like we have to give the, the information to the EDA Board member ten days ahead. I think we need to give Tony the same amount, that if he doesn't agree with what that lawyer's saying, because if he doesn't think that that legal opinion is correct, like he said in the past, was it? That he has an opportunity to fight his cause or plead his case, whatever, and this all happened before the hearing, so when it comes to the hearing, it's clear as to if Tony is gonna be able to vote or not. So, we're not delaying it a whole nother two weeks before we even have a council meeting to be able to do anything. I'd like to move forward to set a date for the hearing, but then to allow enough time to get the, the ruling or the whatever as to the conflict of interest.
So, if you set the hearing after the next council meeting, you could make that determination at the next council meeting, if that's how you wanna do it. And then that way, you're, you get to make that decision as you see fit for that. As, as a council, you can do anything you want, you know, I mean, you have that.
But I, I'd ask this, and I, I've mentioned it in an email today, after reading that four pages from that, where it says that it's all allegations, but an investigation has been done, I, everyone in this council needs a copy of the investigation as to who was talking to who, who complained about what, who said what, and if I, if I see that and I know it's all factually true, I'll abstain. But if I see that we don't have any investigation results, if I see that this is a witch hunt, if I see that this is sour grapes from somebody, hell no, I'm not gonna abstain. There's things that have gone on with this whole situation, that if you're gonna bring one of it out in the public and chastise one, I intend to bring out the rest. So, the ball's in your court, and let me tell you something, you probably don't wanna hear what I have to say, but I'm gonna say it. Whether I have to walk out that door with my resignation and your desk, and come back and start at that podium and say it, that's what I'll do. That's integrity. So, now, how deep do you wanna dig this hole?
Well, and then I think it goes back to two, it's like, direct friends, you've known Jeff for how many years?
Grade school.
I've known him for twenty-two, where do you draw the line on what's a direct friend?
Again, there is no clear distinction of that.
And the clearest definition of conflict of interest is personal gain. I gain nothing personally by this. Nothing.
I think that, referring back to what you said, you know, this can be clarified further, you know, if the council sees fit, you know, print out copies of the statute, whatever, get an actual answer to a specific question if that's what you're asking, but I, I don't see why you can't vote on this to determine whether or not to set a hearing or not and review the evidence. The evidence was, you know, as you see in the, in the allegations, or in the legal opinion, a complaint, a written complaint was addressed, information was gathered, and it was turned over to the city attorney. Information was gathered and it was turned over to the city attorney. The city attorney has now made the recommendation to the council to review it and determine if they see fit to review whether or not that individual should stay on the EDA board or not and set a hearing. If you set a hearing, then that information is presented to all council members and the EDA board member, Mr. Solomon, so that he is able to review it and come in and defend himself.
Well, because I'm a little confused on the last statement that Matt, the lawyer, makes when he says that the administrator, city staff, and myself, him, do not make any opinion on the truth or veracity of these allegations. If there's been an investigation, shouldn't he be able to put his teeth into it a little bit more than this?
And if there's been an investigation, we should see the evidence of the investigation before we make a meeting.
If you see the information in the investigation, it's on public record. And the idea of this was...
But it's already public record for Mr. Solomon. That's my point.
Only allegations.
It's not.
It's your determination on whether you see fit, you know, whether...
It's not the way small towns work. He's already tried and convicted in the minds of most. And I'd defend anybody at this table the same way I'm defending Jeff.
That's the purpose...
Because it's just not right.
That's the purpose of the hearing, is to give everyone involved an opportunity to be heard. And everyone involved will have all of the material related to the allegations and the investigation well before the hearing so that they have time to prepare and it's, you know, there's no prejudice here. And all this is stating is that there has not been a hearing. Therefore, no, the staff and they don't make any opinion as to the veracity of, that's what this means. There hasn't been a hearing. So the question is, do we have a hearing? So we hear all the evidence, we can hear from Mr. Solomon, and then we make a decision. That's what this is about.
To be honest with you, I didn't think it was going to come out at this meeting.
We'll take a shit of it. That's why I'm talking about public record.
There's no other legal way to do it, so...
If there was...
I just have a problem just because I'm new on the council. I'm sure I've ticked a few people off, but I don't think I've done any major tickoffs yet. But I just am concerned that these things get to such a point before there's a lot of factual information that can affect a person's character or the question of their character. And the last thing I wanted, and I'll say this to God and everybody out there that's listening and whoever puts in the paper, that I think what was done to Tony in the past was wrong. There are things, there was allegations, but there is never any hard evidence presented and everything. But it went to a recall. I voted for the recall and everything, but I sit here and I think, okay, his character, his integrity, his, whatever word you want to use, was called in question. And I don't want people out in the community thinking all they have to do is write a letter with allegations and complaints, and it's going to get out there for everybody in this community to hear it before it's even known to be factual or not. It's, that's the, I don't want that precedent set. And that's what I'm concerned about with this, that a precedence now has occurred twice with two people that's gotten out there in the community, and it's gotten blown up to such a point that damage has been done.
Well, to answer that, I'll bring it in then into my integrity and my professionalism. I received a complaint in my office. I acted upon it. I sent the information to the city attorney. It was justified by the city attorney to, and deemed serious enough to bring to the council for review. That's the facts. As far as what the information is and such, any council member is available to see it at any time. It will not become public unless you set a hearing for it to be so, and then Mr. Solomon will get a copy of it so he can take a look at it. And he can bring in, you know, legal counsel if he'd like to address the council. Anything he wishes to do, he's welcome to do that. But the facts were...
So right now, we could individually come and see the facts, the evidence that you...
It was requested by one council member today, and I emailed it to them. But I cannot push it out to you as a packet agenda item and, you know, without violating Mr. Solomon's rights. And I will not do a wrong to correct a wrong.
And it wasn't a matter of somebody just threw out an allegation here and then it went public. As Chris stated, he looked into it, and there's more to it than just somebody threw something out there and now we're going to crucify someone for it. That's not what's going on here. And in fact, we're actually, we're following the law and the statutes involved, and we're trying to keep it as fair as possible. There were efforts made prior to this to discuss it with Mr. Solomon, and he flat refused, which left us no choice...
That, sir, is not a complete answer.
...but to move forward as he was told. We would follow the statutes. And he refused multiple times. So that's why we're here now.
I thought Matt was going to be here.
He will be here for a hearing if you set a hearing. If you don't set a hearing, nothing goes further and this goes away. If you set a hearing, again, the evidence will be presented 10 days prior to the hearing to Mr. Solomon as it's stated in there so that he can defend his position and action it as he sees fit, and the council will then receive everything.
And then it will be public knowledge.
It will be public knowledge. That is correct.
It doesn't have to be exactly 10 days. I mean, we would get it out right away, but that's the minimum.
I don't feel comfortable now moving forward without seeing the evidence first. I thought we could do this more, and this is my...
I will caution again that this was something that was given to me. I did my due diligence and went forward with the city attorney and followed Minnesota State statute.
So the question is, do we trust our city attorney and our city administrator to give us proper information?
But that's not the question. If he's already sent it out to one person, the rest of the council needs to have that information. It doesn't have to go out in a council packet. This whole thing, the whole allegation thing could have went out as an FYI and off the agenda.
It went out as an FYI about two weeks ago when I sent you guys an email. And nobody reached out to me except one said, thank you for keeping track of this. So, I mean, if this is an effort to table this and move this down the road, that's fine. But I can tell you this, when you see the evidence, you won't table it a second time. I'm that confident. This isn't a witch hunt. This isn't me. This is me doing my job. And frankly, you talked about integrity. I think that if you don't think that this is quantifiable, and if you don't think that this meets the requirement of the Minnesota State statute, I would say you question my integrity then, and our city attorney.
I questioned the fact that I was not given the information. And I do question the city attorney. I have questioned him since we first met. So it, without having the facts in front of me, I find it hard to make a decision. Because it smells an awful lot like what happened to me. And I wasn't allowed to have any of that information or any of that, but I took it. But that's me. I volunteered for this job. I took the job. I volunteered to walk. I could have quit like everybody else wanted me to, but I stood up there and went through it. And to see it happen to someone else without seeing all the information, and I swear, I swear, I, if you want it to go, let's make it go. I don't care. But I want to know what's going on before you expect me to make a definite or an answer one way or another on whether I do abstain or whether this is the right course of action. With that malarkey that he put, that four-page malarkey he put out here, doesn't tell me anything to make a decision. It just smells bad. And my gut says, no, that ain't the right way of doing it. That may be the legal way, but that's not the right way.
Well, it's the purpose of the hearing is to get all the information out for everyone. They'll have the information 10 days prior or more before the hearing.
But one council member's already got it, and the rest of the council members don't? Is that what you said?
Again, it was requested by that council member to send it to him. I referred to the attorney if I could email it to that council member, and he said all but one item because that needed to be gone through and have items, personal items, security, social security numbers, things like that that could not be added to it. And that item could not be sent out because we would just be doing the same wrong that was done previously. There's email proof, there's witness statements, there's, there is evidence for this. And if you would like to see it, that's fine. But that's not typically how the process goes with this, so, you know, that's...
My opinion is if one person has it, the rest of us need to see it.
I guess I'll formally ask you later to send me the information if that's what I need to do. I don't want you thinking that I question your integrity because that is not it. If anything, Chris, you have showed us you have a lot of integrity. If you say that the information and the evidence would convince us that we need to move forward, I guess I'm willing to weigh that quite heavily on your opinion. Because I'll be honest, this legal mumble jumble, he doesn't really give us a clear direction. He says, you may do this, you may do that. If the council chooses not to pursue, no further action needs to be taken. I guess I'm used to when I ask for a legal opinion, I get an opinion. This is what I would recommend you doing. I did not read that in this. But based on what you're saying, Chris, I will tell you, I trust your opinion. And I will move forward with setting a hearing, but I think we need that information before the hearing, just like the EDA member deserves to have that information. I want to know what we're going in with.
And that is the process as dictated in the Minnesota State statute.
And so, I mean, because I do trust you, Chris. I do think you have integrity. But at the same time, I'm not saying the EDA member does not have some integrity too, that I think he deserves that opportunity. And I'll be honest, as far as the person that alleged these misdeeds or misconduct, I don't know him enough to have an opinion. I mean, I don't. And so I would give him the same opportunity that he can voice his things, but I want to see what was investigated then to prove if they were true or not. So, in a long speech that I just gave, I'm not running for president or anything, I guess I will make a motion that we move forward with setting a hearing date with the EDA member getting the information ahead of time. And can I include that council members are given it ahead of time because it's going to become public?
You will be anyway, but yes.
Yes, that's the procedure.
It's going to become public.
It will only become public when it's put into the agenda packet. So if something changes before the agenda packet, it would not be public.
That's correct.
So if we get the...
If you get the email and you choose at the next meeting to decline and close the hearing, or the member gets the information and he decides that he no longer wants to proceed with anything, everybody has options until that point. It would not be made public until...
The actual hearing date.
Yeah.
Which we could set after the next council meeting.
The recommendation from the attorney would be to set the 24th or the 25th of July for multiple reasons, also so that he would be available to be here.
So that would be after our next council meeting by a couple of days.
Correct.
I would not be in town on the 25th.
My question on that is, what is the desired outcome of a hearing? What is the goal? What is it we're trying to do? What is the worst-case scenario that we're looking at? I mean, is it, do you just want somebody removed from the board? Is that what this is all about? Are you...
It's about holding people accountable for their positions.
I know, I understand that, but I'm asking how, you know, what is it? What is the end game of all this?
Holding people accountable for their positions. I think that's an easy enough answer. When somebody does something that puts the city in jeopardy, potentially, or violates open meeting law or their position or other things as was named in there, the council needs to review that and determine if they want that person on a board representing the city. It's not my position.
No, I know it's not yours. It's not personal, and I don't question your integrity at all. I'm just trying to question, I question what our end game here is. You know, I understand the motives, whether your motives are strictly, as a former administrator used to say, I'm the bureaucrat. I do what I'm told. I follow the rules. I keep everybody else inside the rules. I understand that. That requires no explanation on my part. I know it inside out. It's, there's, whenever there's a hearing or an accusation, there's always an expectation. I don't question your expectations at all. But I question the expectations of why we're doing this.
Well, the two outcomes could be that the council decides that there's not enough information, or they, or it's unfounded, and they decide that they want to keep Jeff Solomon as an EDA board member, or they decide that he acted improperly and violated, you know, misconduct would be the generalized one that would cover the allegations and remove him from the EDA board. Those would be the two options.
But there'd be more options. There could be a third option. I mean, there could be a third option that, okay, yeah, we're not saying that he was totally innocent, but you could do some re-education. You know, you don't just fire an employee because they make a mistake all the time, depending on the level of the mistake and everything. But you just don't, like an old saying, you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater, you know? And so I think there would be, yeah, the two extremes is nothing would happen to him, he would be fired from the EDA board, or there could be middle ground with, you know, a corrective action plan and stuff like that. Correct?
Yeah. The council can make any decision that they see fit. This is up to the five people that's set up here. It's not, there's no clear-cut path for this.
Did you complete your motion? Do we have a motion on the floor?
No, I had...
No, I don't think I did.
Okay.
Nope.
You started it.
He threw out some dates. He threw out a date.
No.
You said you're not available on the 25th?
No.
So if the 24th works, your motion would include setting a hearing for the 24th. And again, the procedure per Minnesota State statute is to not only give the council the information at that point, but to also give it to the EDA board member.
Okay. So add that to my motion when you listen here. That we'll set it for the 24th.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor, correct?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll think it.
First and a second, all in favor of continuing to a hearing?
Hang on a second. So, or would it, I don't mind your motion, but would it...
No, that's fine.
Would it be to table it so until everybody gets the information? Because I'll admit, I'm the one that asked for the information today. I know what's in there. Would it be more fair to table it until you guys can review it so you actually know what you're voting on to actually have a hearing?
Well, no, because on the 22nd, we could, after we reviewed it and everything at our next council meeting, we can cancel the hearing. So then nothing is public.
Okay.
Correct?
Correct. But you cannot schedule the hearing for anything sooner than 10 days from, you know, notification to Mr. Solomon.
Right.
So if you did it today, we need really 11 days because we need tomorrow to notify and get the information.
The 24th provides for that, then?
Correct. That would give ample time. That would give ample time.
So, there's a first and a second on the motion. Is there any further discussion or questions? All in favor of setting a hearing date of 24 July to hear the merits of the case, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries to hearing on the 24th of July.
Okay, not that I want to bring this up, but do we have to decide on the conflict of interest thing?
I will get information for the attorney and get you, it spelled out further, email it to you, and we can put it on the agenda for the 22nd, and the council can then decide how they see fit from that point forward.
I think you also need to go down the path of direct friends, too.
Yep. If you're going to do one, you got to do them all.
Yep, we'll get clarification.
Then you're down to two people deciding on a hearing, if that's the case.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the route it's going to go, it's, especially in a small town, you run into that. It's like, I talk to Jeff probably once or twice a week about, not about what's going on, but other things. So it's like, am I going to gain any money off it? No, not a penny. But you're still talking direct friend.
No, I agree, we need clarification on that.
And then I think we've got a whole nother can of worms if that comes up.
Yep.
Let's move on to Resolution 2019-42, National Night Out.
Did we take care of that?
Have they approved the resolution?
Yep, yep.
Municipal accounts payable.
Make a motion to approve the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage in the planning commission minutes from June 3rd.
Second. First and second, any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Get a motion for breakthrough beverage?
So move.
First and second, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Breakthrough beverage is approved. Planning commission minutes, we did. Anybody have anything to add? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Motion carries.